Good evening. We are glad so many of you are here tonight. If you would bow with me for a word of prayer before we get started. We gather here tonight in service to the city of Nacogdoches. We are grateful to the city staff and the work they do on a daily basis. And we are grateful to the citizens who volunteer their time and talents in a variety of ways. As a council, may we be honest stewards and may our work tonight be blessed with insight, understanding, and wisdom. Help us to represent all members of our community and to conduct ourselves in a spirit of cooperation in deliberations and in our decisions that will impact our city and our citizens today and in the future. Amen.
Amen.
I'd like to call the meeting of June 18th, 2019, to order. And first of all, we have a community recognition. And I would like for Officer Brian Eggbret and Hunter to join me up here. Oh, we finally got a toy.
Oh, yeah.
A little bit active tonight, aren't we?
Oh, he's pulling it up too.
My goodness gracious. Okay. Oh, so good. Such a beautiful doll. Beautiful doll. Okay, well, last month Officer Eggbret was the recipient of the 2018 National Criminal Enforcement Association's largest highway-level interdiction MDMA seizure award when they had their annual conference. And where was the conference?
Kansas City.
Kansas City. Okay. The award was for a seizure of what?
Ecstasy.
How much?
It was right at five and a half pounds of ecstasy or about 13,000 dosage units.
And so, and how was that acquired? How did you all find that? Can you tell us a little bit about that?
Yeah, it was, it was a stop that was conducted, actually, the first part of the stop was conducted southbound. That was where our first introduction into these guys were at, where we believed that they were involved in criminal activity. We were able to monitor them a little bit further and as they went into Houston and picked up their shipment. And on their way back, they were stopped again coming into Nacogdoches. They had it concealed inside the engine compartment in the air breather.
And Hunter found that?
Hunter, yes, he did find that. He wasn't deployed initially on the roadside. But he was deployed at the office for the search, yep.
Well, we have a commemorative brick that is reminiscent of our brick streets of downtown Nacogdoches and that we hope that every time you look at it, you will think about the city and how much we appreciate your service.
Yes, ma'am.
And Hunter's.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you so much.
Of course. Thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Uh, going from now? We'll wait for our fellow council members. Thank you. Thank you very much for your service.
Thank you very much.
Uh-oh, Garth. Okay. We will now move to, let's see, our open forum. Before we get started, as a reminder, the open forum is the public's opportunity to address council on any matter related to the city that is not on tonight's agenda. Our rules and procedures for council meetings apply to the open forum and include disrupting the public meeting as a violation of state law and no cursing is allowed. Your comments are limited to three minutes. So first, we have Courtney Roberts. Good evening.
Hello.
If you'll give your name and what else, an address? Just, just name and address and then go ahead and get started.
My name is Courtney Roberts and I'll be addressing police brutality. Can I, again?
Yes, go right ahead.
Hi, my name is Courtney Roberts and I'm a 15-year-old activist and entrepreneur out of Nacogdoches, Texas. Not only has this very town seen the injustices taking place by the Nacogdoches Police Department, over 63,000 of my followers via Instagram have seen as well, including many influential leaders I'm connected with throughout the country. Since the beginning, black and brown bodies have been terrorized by those that are set to protect us. Our childhoods are ripped from us and our lives and innocence in most cases have been stripped from us. Many refuse to acknowledge the issue of police brutality as black people. This is our reality. If you will listen and take the time to understand our perspective, this country will begin to move forward. In Lindsay's case, this officer wasn't even in the line of duty. He simply looked like a normal, everyday citizen in an apartment complex parking lot. As you watch the videos, you see how he managed to brutalize these young women that are close to the same size as me, using unnecessary force and causing up a storm when he wasn't even on the clock. Even if he was on duty, this wouldn't justify his ruthless actions. These young women's lives had been shifted and they had been traumatized by the event that took place. As black people, we have internalized and seen our bodies brutalized and killed in cold blood to the point where we aren't even surprised. Yes, there are good cops out there, but you are just as guilty as the perpetrator if you remain silent during times of injustice. By not saying anything adds on to the lack of trust that the black community has towards the police department and local government officials. As black people, we are aware of the internal violence within our own communities, but that internal conflict doesn't, does not take away the effect of systematic and institutional racism we face on a daily basis in this country, most recently in this town. There is an issue and it has made its way to Nacogdoches, Texas. The Nacogdoches Accountability Coalition and the Black Community of Nacogdoches demands charges are set against Officer Anders and the dropping of charges for Lindsay and the other girls affected. If you were in a position of power, make that change and do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you, Courtney. Our next speaker is Mary Ryan. Roan, I'm sorry. That's my, totally my fault. Mary Roan.
Hello, my name is Mary Roan. I live at 700 Northwood Circle. I've been in Nacogdoches probably 43 years, almost all of my married life. And I would like to address the issue of our police department. I'm almost 70. I have seen a lot of changes in our country, but I have also seen the good things that happen in our community. And part of that is because we have an outstanding police department, from the chief on down to whoever might be the lowest one on the totem pole. Our police department is an honorable department. The officers are honorable. I'm speaking to you as a private citizen, but also on behalf of my community watch group. I am the community watch captain for Northwood Circle in Deerfield. And as a unit, we are supporting our police department. We understand there's problems. We, I'm an, I'm an alumni of SFA. I was in, I graduated later in life and I sat in the classroom and was part of the student body there. So I know about the students, not as a young person, but as an older person. And I know that our country is a republic. We have, we live under a body of laws. And there is proper behavior, there's law-abiding behavior, and there is civilized behavior. And our police department helps us keep those things in order. I understand what happens at the, at the college. I understand being a young person. But this is my community, our community. And I want to keep it the way it is with a strong, fine police department. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. My third person is Tyrone Spencer. Good evening.
Hi, my name is Tyrone Spencer. I live at 4965 FM 698 in Nacogdoches, Central Heights. I grew up in Nacogdoches. I have been a citizen of Nacogdoches all my life, born and raised right here. And I'm a law-abiding citizen. I respect authority. I was raised to believe in authority and to do what is right. And whatever is right, not what I say is right, but whatever is right is always what I strive and endeavor to do in my life, is to do what is right. I'm a Christian. I've been a Christian since I was 15 years old. I believe in God. I believe in Jesus. I believe in the Bible as our authority, and I follow that. And being raised in Nacogdoches and being a citizen of Nacogdoches, being young, I have been pulled over several times by several officers of Nacogdoches, some of whom are my friends and some of whom I didn't know. But as long as I have respected them and followed their commands and their orders, what they did is, is they were very respectful to me and I've had no problems whatsoever. I'm 48 years old and I've lived here all my life and I've abided by that and I've never had a single issue at all. And I love what the police department in Nacogdoches does. If I call on them, they're there, not just the police department of Nacogdoches, but the sheriff's office, because I live out in a rural county. Sometimes I have to call them on certain issues. But they've always handled those issues and taken care of those issues for me, whatever they might be. And I don't want that to stop. I want that to continue. And I think that Nacogdoches has one of the best, if not the best, police chiefs that I've ever been under by this authoritative rule. I love Jim. I appreciate Jim and what he does. I think he stands up for what's right and he'll do what's right. He wants to do what's right. If we'll back him up, if we'll support him, then we'll have a man that, that we can be proud of and have a police department and administration that we can also be proud of. I'm not afraid of policemen. I'm not afraid of submitting to the right kind of authority. I believe that's what we have in existence in Nacogdoches. And yes, I am a black man and this is coming from me. And I believe in judging a man not by the color of his skin, but by the content of his character and treating all people exactly the same until they give you reason to do otherwise. And I tell you, if we don't come down here and tell the truth, and truth is what needs to be told, someday there's going to be a day called the Judgment Day and nobody gets away with nothing. So if we come in here and lie and we don't tell the truth and we don't honor what God has taught us to believe in and to do, which is to respect Him and His word and His authority, then we're all going to have to spend eternity in a devil's burning hell for all of eternity. And I won't go to hell for anybody. So I appreciate the time and the opportunity to talk to you about this. And again, no racism involved in it, none of that stuff. I have eat at this man's house. I have swim in his pool. My kids have. A good man. And he needs not to be degraded and he needs not to be despised. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Spencer. Next on our agenda are items to be removed from the consent agenda. If council members want to discuss something, and if not, Chair will entertain a motion for approval.
I'll make, I would like to make, on the consent agenda B. I voted against it in the beginning and I'm still opposed to it, basically because of tree-cutting environment, health issues as of noise and dust, and repair, street repair. I just want to make sure the record states that I'm, I was against it and I voted against it and I will vote against it tonight.
And as I recall, your, your major concern was the air quality.
Air quality, and, well, and then also, I mean, the environment part about cutting the tree down, that also plays into the issue, the dust and the noise, and also the repair of streets when, you know, moving up the dirt and gravel and, yes.
Do you have anything you want to mention about that particular item? And if not, we can still entertain a motion.
Sure. I'm okay with it. I'd present, or I'd make a motion that we pass the consent agenda as it sounds.
Well, I will second. So all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Motion passes. Number six, for our public hearing, consider a request for a special use permit to construct Park Sporting Field Complex on Lot 28A, City Block 54. Who is this city plant? Ah, Mr. Manti, good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The item before us tonight is for a specific use permit to allow the construction of a park or sporting field complex for the Boys and Girls Club, which is located at the intersection of Tower Street and Park Street. Per the city zoning ordinance, to, to be able to put up a sporting field complex, you will need a specific use permit. This is basically to allow the applicant to give more information on what the use is all about. The site is, I have here on the map showing the, the location map of the site. This is the area showing, it's very wooded along the boundaries. It's about 3.2 acres. The current zoning for this property is agricultural. Currently is vacant. There's nothing on it. And the future land use for this area is vacant, basically meaning that during the creation of the comprehensive plan, some of the parcels were left vacant for future use to determine what should go on there. Staff met with the applicant, we discussed a lot of information on the site plan, and I would say they were very cooperative. They did consider a lot of factors, considering the fact that this site is within a residential neighborhood. And so their development was designed in such a way that it will have less impact on surrounding users. So like I said earlier, the zoning map is agriculture, as you can see on the screen. Future land use calls for it to be vacant. We did send a notification to properties within 200 feet and nobody responded in opposition of, of this property. We did have one or two phone calls saying they were very much interested in this development. I have a picture here showing the side view from Tower Road and from Park Street. So I've per the city ordinance for a property to be, to be considered for an SUP approval, there are certain factors that we need to consider, one of them being compactability. I talked about compactability. Currently, the Boys and Girls Club is actually doing a good job in the community and the neighborhood. We've had no problems or any complaint from any citizen or anybody who patronizes use. The use is low intensity, meaning it's not going to be a sporting facility that will be used on a, on a daily basis. It's going to be used for their specific outdoor activities. And so we don't see any major adverse impacts of this development within the vicinity. And like I said earlier, we do agree that it's within a residential neighborhood, but based on the design of the site and the willingness of the applicant to work with the neighbors, we believe this development will not have any adverse impact on surrounding land uses. The use would also have all the utilities as required for every development. One thing that we did discuss a lot was parking for this use. So I have here showing the site plan. The site is only going to have the handicap accessible parking. And most, the parking for this property will be across the street from the, which is the Nacogdoches ISD parking. And based on our city ordinance, we do allow a shared parking agreement. So before the site will be given a final permit to operate, they would have to get us a parking agreement signed by Nacogdoches Independent School District. And I believe the Boys and Girls Club Administration is currently working on that. To, the next factor to consider would be nuisance. We do agree that because of the nature of the use, there's a possible impact of sound or light pollution that is if they put up a light on site in the evening. But based on our discussion with the applicants, they will do their best to make sure all of this is minimized to prevent, to make them a good neighbor within that vicinity. Landscaping, we did talk to the, based on the site plan provided, they will do their best to maintain most of the trees along the boundaries, as you can see on, on the screen. And so we believe that will be adequate landscaping for the property and also enhance the status of the area. No part of the property lies within the 100-year floodplain. Staff would like to acknowledge the fact that this development will function as a public use that will act as a catalyst for other development or potential catalyst for other developments. And we believe it will also serve a positive impact for the, the city and the surrounding. Obviously, looking at the use of the Boys and Girls Club, they are there to serve the city. And so this addition will go a long way to benefit the citizens of Nacogdoches. Also want to consider the fact that even though it's a low intensity use, there's still a reason to consider noise and light pollution. But based on discussion with the applicants, they don't plan on putting any lighting on the site until there's a need for it. And once we get to that stage, the light will have to be structured in such a way that it will not have any adverse impact on the residential uses surrounding it. And the applicant also submitted some site plans to, to the city staff. We have reviewed them and we believe that it, it will not have any adverse impact on surrounding uses. In fact, it will be a great addition to the area and to the city as a whole. PNZ did vote recommendation of this. I have some pictures here showing the west side of this, of the property. To the south, we have residences. And to the north, we had the school. And to the east, some residences. We believe the location of this will serve as a, a good use for the residential uses surrounding this property and will be a great addition to the neighborhood. I have some more pictures here showing the sites in question. So like I said earlier, to be a great public center that would act as a catalyst for neighbor interaction, it's a low intensity use, there's still reason to consider noise and light pollution. But I, in, in total, we believe this SUP, if granted, will not have any adverse impact on surrounding users and will be a great addition to the city and continue the good work that the Boys and Girls Club is already doing. This is my presentation to an end and I'll be willing to take any questions you have.
Okay. Thank you very much. Is there anyone here tonight that has anything to say about this agenda item? None? Okay. Counsel, questions or comments for Mr. Manti?
I have a question. I mean, the statement, "Do their best," came up several times. And is there going to be like a time restriction? Because you made a statement also, the lights were not going to be installed in the beginning. But is there going to be a time restriction if lights are placed?
I have the director here to do that, but the light restriction, no at the moment, unless it's a condition that you want to put on. Based on my interaction with the applicants, they plan to not have any games after dark. That is why I said initially that they might probably not even put up the lights. So there's no light restriction because they don't plan on having events late into the evening because Boys and Girls Club, as we all know, most of the activities are centered around, I don't want to use the word kids, but younger folks, and they don't intend to keep them late in the evenings.
Thank you.
Do you have anything, Garth?
I've been waiting for this a long time. I appreciate your, your work on this. It's exciting.
They have. Okay. Chair will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve agenda item number?
Six.
Agenda item number six.
I'll second.
Okay, moved and seconded that we approve agenda item number six as presented. No further discussion. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes. I'd like to thank Steve Davidson and your Board of Directors and your staff for all you do for, for the young people in our community. It's a great, great place out there.
We appreciate the support.
Thank you. Agenda item number seven, a public hearing, consider a request for historic overlay for Lot 10A, City Block 62. Well, good evening. How are you doing?
Good evening. I'm doing well. Thank you, Mayor, City Council. I'm Hannah Anderson, Community Services Coordinator, presenting historic overlay case number 2019-001. We have historic overlay as an option for people to recognize a significant landmark or district. Staff does not dictate this. It is completely voluntary for either the property owner or another applicant to submit. And this is not spot zoning. It is simply an overlay and it helps add protection to the lot. The applicant for this case is Agatha Moreland on behalf of Southwest Region Conference of Seventh Day Adventists. I spoke with their Executive Secretary, Stephen Brooks, and they are fully in support of this designation and they were pretty excited about it, asked if there would be a ceremony. Unfortunately, not for this one, unless they want to do it themselves. With all historic overlay applications, the case is first brought to Historic Landmark Preservation Committee and then Planning and Zoning, who recommend approval or not. HLPC voted unanimously to recommend approval on June 3rd, as did Planning and Zoning on June 10th, also unanimously. Staff met multiple times with Ms. Moreland, who, she brought family histories, newspaper clippings, photographs. She brought part of what the, the individual involved with this designation, what he wrote. So just tons of information on this gentleman. And his name was Jesse Mayfield. We determined that it is eligible under criteria on three. The building is associated with the life of a significant person in the city's past. And during HLPC, one of our board members actually pointed out that it may be also eligible under criteria on two for religious significance, contributing to the broad patterns of local history. It's important to note that the building itself is not what is being designated. It is simply the location. It is associated with Mr. Mayfield. It is about the events that occurred there, not the structure itself. That means that should the property owner want to do restoration in the future, they will have a little bit more leeway than is typically allowed for, for a case like this. And I'm not going to go over Mr. Mayfield's whole history. There was over 100 years of it. He lived from about 1885 to 1985. And, but basically, he was an uneducated man and he was taught by his daughter how to read and write. And when he discovered Christianity, he started testifying to his neighbors and he never stopped. He served in ministry for almost 70 years and he was the one who organized and opened this church, which is located very close to here, only about a mile and a half east of here in the Morton Hill area. So I'm happy to take any questions after the public hearing.
Thank you. So do we have anyone that wants to speak for or against this? Okay. Is his daughter here tonight?
The applicant, Ms. Moreland, is, yes.
Okay, okay, great. Okay, good. Well, I'm glad you're here. Counsel, any, you want to make a comment?
No, I mean, I, I know the Mayfield family.
Yeah.
This is something that's good for, for the community.
For the community, absolutely, absolutely. Any questions?
Sure. Could you speak to the difference between when it's the actual structure versus the area that's being overlaid? What, what does that look like in practice? Like, I mean, could they tear the building down and build something, build a car wash there or, what does that mean in practice?
So they would have to apply for any work done to the exterior of the building. And because of this protection, it's going to be much harder to do that. For, for a building itself, for anything that's in the historic overlay has a designation, they have to apply to HLPC for exterior work that's not ordinary maintenance. So, so they need to replace a board with another board. That's fine. They don't have to apply. But if they were to change out the windows, then they would have to apply for us. So it, it just serves as protection and so nothing's impossible once, once these things are in place, but it does add that protection for the future.
Sure. That's great. Thank you.
Okay. Nothing else? Chair will entertain a motion? For number seven.
I make a motion to approve agenda item number seven as is.
I'll second.
Okay. Moved and seconded, we approve agenda item number seven as presented. No further discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Hannah. Appreciate it very much. Agenda Item Number Eight, Consider Nacogdoches A. O. Mangum Jr. Regional Airport Terminal Area Plan Updated Proposal. And Mary Resti is here, our Airport Manager. This is simply a presentation tonight, correct?
Yes.
Looking to the future, proposed updates to the city's comprehensive plan. And we remain aware that we would have to have significant state, probably in federal funding, to be able to accomplish this. But tell us what your plans are.
Well, Mayor, Council, Councilman, thank you for the opportunity to make this presentation to you tonight. As the mayor said, I'm making this presentation to you before we take this public anymore. We have already taken this before the Airport Advisory Board. And after a lot of discussion, they voted to support this plan unanimously, so I do want to say that in starting. If you agree with this, then we'll go forward with public hearings and hopefully come back to you with a final proposal. I hope that you've had time to view the video that we sent out. It gave a little bit of the history of the airport, in case you're not familiar with that, and just a little bit about what we're wanting to accomplish.
Your video was very informative, and I don't know, the narrator sounded very familiar to me.
I think we had to pay him a lot to do that.
Really? Very interesting. Excuse my interruption. I just said.
Thank you, Mr. Jeffers. I think there's some candy at the FBO with your name on it.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Before I get started, this is just a little pullout of the map that you see up here, and we'll probably talk about that just for a second.
Yes.
Just, thank you. So why are we doing this? We already have a pilot's lounge. We already have a, an FBO office. And those things are nice. We work very hard to keep them tidy. The problem is, we don't have enough space. And as we move forward, we would like to put forward our best foot as people fly in, whether it be corporate, university, or just our transient visitors, to have someplace nice to fly into that, think of, I always tell people, think of the airport as a mile, it's your first mile into the city if you're flying in. It's the gateway to the city. They see us before they see anybody else, before they see our beautiful brick streets. They see the airport. So that's what this is about. A couple of years ago, maybe longer than that, Mr. Jeffers told me, said, "I need you to dream a little." So that's what we've been doing. We're dreaming a little bit here. As I said, it's the gateway, and we want to, we want it to be the very best that it can be. This plan would put the airport out there as a top-notch economical development tool, which is what it should be. The airport should be used to attract new business here. I always say, people with real money to spend in our community are most likely going to fly in. And when they fly in, we want them to know that they're welcome here. We want to do everything that we can to impress them that we care about our community and we care about them, and we want them here. And I believe that's like welcoming somebody into your home. If it's nice, they, we want them to feel comfortable and welcome. So that's, that's more or less our goal. This plan will give us better space, building space, but also parking space. In case you don't know, last Saturday, and this is unusual for us, but it was a lot of fun, because I wasn't the one out there directing traffic. But we had 16 aircraft involved with the Civil Air Patrol, and they were smaller aircraft. But we also had, at one time, seven large jets at the airport. They were here. Coaching staff had flown in to attend the SFA football camp. We want to see more of that. You know, we want to have more space to do that. Where we are right now, if you'll look at the map, let me grab my map. This is where my office sits. So if you look at the map up there, it's near the bottom. And as aircraft come in, they taxi, they taxi in here, and we have sort of a bottleneck right here, which presents a problem. So the new plan would alleviate that. The idea is that the terminal area, the terminal would run parallel to the taxiway and the runway. Aircraft would fly in, they would taxi around, they would have immediate access to our office, to all of our services. We would all be under one building, which I think would also be a plus. So that, that's a little bit of what we have, about we have in mind and what we're, why we're proposing this. The plan also will call for the demolition of two rows of T-hangers, which is the map that I just gave you. Those would be taken down in order to create an entrance into the terminal plan, the terminal area here. So as you're seeing here, this is the area that the plan would call, I should have brought my bigger board, sorry, y'all. That would be demolished, it's right there in front of you, to create an entrance. This would be the public entrance on the public side, vehicle side, excuse me, to get to the terminal for passenger pickup or whatever we have going on there that day. So that's, the plan also calls for that. Phase one also includes moving the fuel farm and creating some corporate space for some corporate-sized hangers. So all of that is included in phase one. So it's a big project. It's just the first phase. We would propose to construct T-hangers. That would have to happen before the demolition of the current T-hangers, so that anyone who is already in a hangar would have a place to go if they chose to go. The idea is that the city would own the T-hangers and that we would rent them as additional revenue to come into the airport. So that's, that is our thought behind that, and that's all part of phase one. We have, as we, if we're allowed to move forward with this, we'll begin talking, I believe some talking points will be logistics. Doesn't matter who you talk to, everybody has ideas about how they would like to see things arranged. Taxiing back and forth, are we going to allow cross-traffic between vehicle traffic and aircraft traffic? All of those will be things that we will talk about. We're fortunate that we have an engineering staff that's professional, and on top of this, we've also, we also have consulting engineers, KSA, and the people on their staff bring over 20 years of experience to planning airports. So I didn't just get out my markers and draw this. This is a plan that's been developed by our consulting engineers. And like I said, as we go forward, there may be some changes to it. Nothing is set in stone yet, and hopefully you'll agree to let me go forward. And when I come back, it may not look exactly like this, but I believe it will look similar to this. That's really all that I have.
Well, that's a lot. That's very interesting. Let's see if there's any comments, and then we'll, I'm sure we'll have a couple of questions for you.
Okay.
Okay. Any comments? Come on up. Glad you're here?
Thanks.
Sure.
I haven't talked in front of Jeff since high school.
My name's John.
Repeat what you said.
You're too old to remember. My name's John Hughes. I grew up in Nacogdoches, obviously. I began pumping gas at the airport in 84 for $3.15 an hour. Worked my way up, became a corporate pilot, flew for Brack Coop and McKinney Drilling and others. Used to fly out of Oklahoma City. So I've got a lot of experience flowing all over the country, been to lots of airports, good and bad. And so I have been on the Airport Advisory Board in years past. I was a part of the original, when we did the, put the new runway in, was on the board then. So I've seen all of it, seen it grow, seen it kind of back up. And so this is an opportunity to move forward, I believe. I am also, we've just recently formed a corporation, my partners and I, John Hasbun and Shannon Conklin, in HCH Aviation, with the intent of forming and establishing a flight academy in, in conjunction with Stephen F. Austin. Lots of water's got to go in the bridge, lots of stones left to be unturned, but we are moving forward, and we submitted a white paper this last week, that we believe it is a tremendous opportunity for the city of Nacogdoches and Stephen F. Austin. Huge pilot shortage, been saying it for 30 years, it has happened. And not just domestic carriers, but international carriers as well, are starving for pilots, mechanics, flight attendants, on and on. And this is something we believe that we can offer certainly locally, under privileged kids that never thought they could be in the aviation industry, make six figures, really make an impact on people's lives. And what the city is planning on doing at the airport can play a huge role in that. So, anyway, thank you all.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Okay. Counsel? Questions?
Just a qu, one question. T-hangers, is that temporary?
No. The T-hangers, you see that row of hangers in, for us, okay. They're basically shaped like a T. You have the front of a one-hanger here and the back of the other. And so the aircraft fit in there, it's just a really good use of space.
Yeah. Okay. Now, is there a maintenance facility? Do you have a maintenance facility?
We do have a mechanic on field. He's our only business on field, other than the city Fuel FBO.
Yeah. Any parts inventory in, at, at this point?
You mean in his shop?
In his shop, or do we?
I don't really know what he keeps in inventory. I do know that, you know, pilots bring their planes to him, and we get a lot of his parts. They get shipped to us, and we get them over to him. So I can't really speak to what he keeps in inventory.
Okay. Thank you. I've spoken with Mr. Conklin at length about this. I'm pretty excited about the opportunity.
It's very exciting.
It'd be a big step forward for us to have an aviation program. I've heard chief talk about it in years past, and to see it become tangible and actually something that might manifest is really exciting.
It's a big deal.
I appreciate the effort that you're putting in, and certainly that you gentlemen are putting in. So, thank you.
So I would like to, I'd like the direction to be a little specific in what you're asking for us. So could you titrate that down and, and tell us exactly what you're asking for, so that we can then put that in a motion, maybe?
The chief and I have visited, and by the way, I, I report directly to the chief of police. So I believe what we're asking is permission to move forward with public hearings and developing a plan to come back to you to approve. Correct?
I would like your enthusiastic support.
I like the idea of having the, the public hearings about it. So say it one more time, so he can...
We're asking permission to move forward with public hearings. And after public hearings, and after those conversations, develop, finalizing a plan, a terminal area, it's called a Terminal Area Plan Update Proposal, to come back for your vote.
Excellent.
Okay. Okay.
I'll make a motion requesting that you move forward with the public hearings to finalize the Terminal Area Plan to eventually be voted upon for...
Second.
Okay. Moved and seconded. If no further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you. I appreciate your time.
Of course. Of course. Now we have Agenda Item Number Nine, Consider Appointment of a Mayor Pro-Tim and Vice-Mayor Pro-Tim. I neglected to mention at the beginning of our meeting that our other two council members are on vacation, out of state, and probably having a great time. But that is where they are this evening, so in case any of you, you were wondering. So the appointment of the Mayor Pro-Tim and Vice-Mayor Pro-Tim are to step in and serve when the mayor is unable to do so. But I do have to say that they do a little bit more than that, because they do help a lot. It's great to be able to share this role with a lot of different community efforts, and I know that both of you have, have helped out with that a lot over the past couple of years. So I would like to make a motion to nominate Roy Bolden as our Mayor Pro-Tim and Garth Hens as Vice-Mayor Pro-Tim. And one of you has to make a second, because we're the only three here.
I'll second.
Okay. Moved and seconded. Any, if no further discussion, or any discussion, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Agenda Item Number Ten, Consider Appointment of Four City Council Members to the Deep East Texas Council of Governments Board of Directors for One-Year Term. This is a phenomenal organization, and you are actu, are you first vice, are you executive secretary of, of the board?
I will be vice-president in July.
In July? You'll become vice-president. That's, it's a big honor for that big group. And I would like to nominate, I guess I should nominate you then, if you want to be vice-president. Right? Don't take that away. I'd like to nominate Roy Bolden and Garth Hens, Jay Anderson, and Amelia Fisher to represent our city on the DECTCOP board. And I would need a second.
Second.
Okay. Moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Agenda Item Number Eleven, We have a budget presentation on TMRS with our city manager, Mr. Jeffers.
Madam Mayor and City Council, the presentation on budget will be rather limited tonight, but in the very near future, you're going to get into the meat of the budget, and you'll be longing for another night like tonight. TMRS has over $30 billion in assets. The city's net position is a little bit over $88 million. We are funded at 86%. And the pension board wants us to be funded at at least 80%. Also, on the unfunded liability, they want it retired within 20 years. We're just under 20 years. Our current contribution rate for 2019 is 15.19%. For 2020, it's being lowered to 14.35%. But we've been paying 15.22%, whittling away at trying to get the unfunded liability retired. Once that happens in about 20 years, then your contribution rate's going to drop from that 15% down to, most likely, under 5%. I will be 87 years old, and so if you want to hold me to my comment, then I will see you then. The retirement plan is extremely important for recruitment purposes as well as retention purposes. Without the retirement plan, we would not be able to recruit qualified people in all of our positions, nor would we be able to retain them. On the downside of that, since we're a part of a citywide network, the Texas Municipal Retirement System, it is portable to other cities. And so it's not unusual for an employee from Nacogdoches to move to Amarillo. That actually happened, and their retirement benefits followed them. And that's one of the attractive parts to an employee as far as it comes to the retirement system. But I think everyone is well aware that Social Security doesn't pay the bills when you retire, and you need a retirement plan. The retirement plan that TMRS offers is held up as an example of how to do it right in Texas, but also the nation. And if you'll recall, there's been a lot of controversy concerning the pension plans in Dallas and Houston. They're not a member of TMRS. It took the legislature to find a plan forward to keep those plans healthy, but we don't have to worry about all that as, as being, being part of TMRS. Another part of the budget presentation tonight is external contributions. And I might mention that the only contributions on that list that are mandatory are the central appraisal districts, district where required by law to participate in the central appraisal district. All those other are fees that you don't have to do. Hot hotel motel tax is a little different, but we don't have to have a CVB. We can do that internally. I am not recommending that there be any changes. Matter of fact, we'll probably make some recommendations for some increases if we can find the money in some of those ca... find the money in some of those categories. But it's important that the council be aware of those external contributions, especially if you want to discuss making any adjustments either up or down. You can see that debt cog is on there. Roy's only worth almost $4,000 and that's about it. You heard me, sir. Madam Mayor, that concludes the budget presentation for this evening. Be happy to answer any questions after public comment.
Thank you. Is there anyone here that has a comment about the TMRS presentation? Okay, hearing none. Counsel, questions?
I just have one question. What we are currently paying now is 15.22. And it was suggested that for 2020, it goes to 14.35?
Yes.
Would that reflect on the budget? I mean, could that be changed?
Yeah, the 14.35 is mandatory under state law.
Okay, that's mandatory.
But you could lower it from the 15.22 to the 14.35 and will give you the dollar amount of such a change.
Okay, that's what I was wanting to know.
By fund, so that you're aware of it. But once again, I think it is critical, long-range planning, that we retire that unfunded liability as quickly as possible. The 15.22, it's not arbitrary. A few years ago, that was our contribution rate. And as it has dropped, we have recommended that it remain at the higher amount to get an earlier payoff on the unfunded liability so that some future council will be a hero.
So we're solvent then? We in good shape?
We're in excellent shape. Can't be much better.
All right, thank you.
You've mentioned in the past that we were struggling to find new employees. I'm curious about two things. One, if we get many other employees from other municipalities that they're training, like we mentioned, we lost somebody, I think to Abilene or to Amarillo or something. Do we bring many people in where that's a big perk to us getting them?
We do bring people in. I wouldn't say that it's a significant number, but we'll pick on the police chief since he played Vanna White and then also endorsed the airport plan, that when he retires, I understand it'll be another 15, 20 years, that you would not be able to replace him without TMRS. Another example is Larissa Philpott as the president, CEO of Nedco or our executive director. She wouldn't have made the switch from planning and walk away from the retirement to Nedco. And so, when we did that, one of the arguments that Nedco was making is that they need access to the retirement plan in order to recruit qualified applicants. And we certainly got a qualified applicant in Larissa. Most of the cities in the state are 4A, 4B, council knows that, which means that they are a city department, therefore they participate in TMRS if their city is a member of TMRS. So it's more critical in the replacement of department heads than it is anywhere else. But there are some other employees who have come to work for us that have transferred from other cities. Typically, they're at the department head level.
Are we seeing a change in trends with, like in the private sector? We're seeing people, millennials care less and less and less about the retirement and the benefits overall. Are we seeing a trend in other cities and counties where that's the case too? Where we might consider down the road having some sort of a parallel path, where we offer a 401K or something that's less costly so that we can raise up wages as an alternative?
That's certainly a possibility and a smidgen of cities have done some alternatives, but they have been driven to do those alternatives simply because of the cost of TMRS. But with TMRS, if memory serves correctly, you don't get to have a smorgasbord. Either you have TMRS or you don't have TMRS. And so, if we were to drop out of TMRS, then I think it would have a devastating effect on replacing employees, especially at the division director level, even if you were paying more money. One thing that TMRS has done well, and then we emphasize it through HR because we're trying to get people to stay, you need to look at your retirement versus where you're going and maybe 50/50 that you get people to look and they say, oh, okay, I never thought about that, I'll go ahead and stay. TMRS mails out a notice to each employee every year that shows them at different points in their career what their retirement benefit would be at retirement. So Meredith is 13, for example. And so it would show that when she's 40, 50, 65, that this is what her retirement funds would be. And it's a hook to help us to convince employees that public service is indeed a noble profession, but also you're going to be taken care of when you retire.
Awesome, okay, that's helpful.
Anything else? You got anything?
No.
You did? Okay, thank you very much. We're going to move to agenda item number 12.
Keep it the wrong way.
Yeah, how about that? Consider city council work session topic selection and work session organization.
Madam Mayor, a repeat of what we said earlier, and the council has expressed an interest in doing a work session at city council. So taking one of the two monthly council meetings and at the beginning of the meeting, there will be very limited business, only items that have to be taken care of. Then after that, the council would go into a work session environment. Council has indicated that they want to have it here so that it is recorded. And if an individual wants to go and look at it on TV later or watch it live, then they are welcome to do so. What asking council to consider tonight is beginning to select some topics to put in a queue so that you'll know, okay, we're going to do these five things as time permits. You can change that queue at any time. So at the end of each work session, we'll have an item to, for the council to identify what they want on that future agenda queue. Sometimes I speculate that those meetings may end up being an educational session. That's entirely up to the council, where if there is a topic where you want a staff briefing, that we can provide that at whatever length of time that the council wants. But the emphasis on the work session, it's for the council to discuss amongst yourselves whatever it is that you wish and then to begin to formulate policy. In the work session, there will be no votes. So if you reach a consensus in a work session that you want to do X, then that would be put on a future agenda and then there would be a vote at that time. Transparency is very important to council. The other item that I would ask council to consider is how long do you want to go in a work session? And it's entirely at the council's discretion, whether that be an hour or five hours. I'll be cranky if you pick five hours, but we will accommodate whatever it is that the council wants to do. These work session topics, they're not all inclusive. They are suggestions that have come from you as well as your colleagues, as well as from executive staff. And so tonight, if you're looking at setting up a work session for the next meeting or the second meeting in July, then I would recommend that you pick two or three topics that you're interested in, one, two, three, more if you want. And give us a little bit of direction of what you want staff to do to prepare for that work session and then you're good to go. Madam Mayor, I'll retire for public comment and we'll return to do your bidding after the comment.
Thank you. Does anyone have a comment about the workshop sessions? Okay, hearing none. We had talked about, go ahead.
No, no, go ahead. I was going to suggest that we wait till all five council members are here before we...
Well, if we wait until they're here, that puts it on the next agenda and we had definitively planned on doing our first one, being flexible, doing the second meeting in July.
Right.
And I think if we choose one or two things to discuss, because I could talk about every single one of them, as could you, that that would be okay. It concerns me that we, well, it's not a huge concern, that we have to wait because if someone is missing at the next meeting, then everyone's not here either.
But, you know, I think each council member would like to have his input during the city council meeting to the public. That's one of the reasons. I stated that.
Yeah, and be mindful, at the end of each work session, we're going to have an agenda item for the council to select additional items for discussion. If the council wants to, majority rules, wants to remove an item that the three of you scheduled, then that's the prerogative of the council. And once again, that selection process will be at the end of each council meeting where there is a work session.
It's the topics, I don't have an issue with, but the length.
Oh.
Yeah.
Well, I was going to suggest, just because we've been flexible, you know, try it out the first time, that second meeting in July, that we pick either two or three topics and we limit it to, I would suggest, not more than two hours. I mean, we may want to go less than that. And then some things may not take as long to discuss. We may have a discussion that peters out after 15 minutes and we may have one that starts to go over and we could make a decision whether to continue with that one or go on to the third or however we want to do that. I'm all for being flexible about it. Some of the topics could be broken down into probably 10 subtopics, like economic development, comprehensive plan, some of those things. But overall, I think for this evening, that if we can decide on one or two, three topics to start with and see how it goes. Do some discussion, give, have some questions and answers for staff or have some questions that maybe staff can answer for us and then decide if we're just getting information, like he mentioned, educational, or if we want to give some direction as to how much further we want to go. What are your thoughts?
I like it. I like, two hours is a good place to start, I think. I think that'd be good. Roy's right, if we vote for six hours, we might have not so happy vacationers come back.
Right, that's true, that's true.
So I'd certainly be up for two or three topics, start with two hours, see how it goes and we can adjust accordingly.
Okay.
For meetings thereafter.
Are you a little more comfortable now?
I'm open for any amount of time. I just want the other city council member to have input.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm open.
Well, I think if we don't set it in stone right now and we're very flexible, then they can have input at the end of that next meeting and we can change it up however council decides we want to change it up.
Councilmember Bolden, I'll be happy to bring you a pillow and a blanket if you'd like.
You've been so generous.
It's scary. Yeah.
Motive.
Okay. So, do you have a topic you would like to?
Oh, yeah, homeless.
The homeless?
Would be my one I would choose.
Okay. I can do that.
I choose economic development.
Okay, any specific part?
How specific do we need to get?
Well, a discussion that doesn't go over, you've got, if we've got two, in fact, we could do homeless and economic development, we just have two topics. And, but you've got to think about, maybe if we do an hour each, how much economic development? So that's how you would break it down.
To your point, I think similar to the comprehensive plan, it would more or less be an outline of putting some discussion topics out there that may or may not end up on future queues.
Okay.
And see, council member, both council members, that you've made a suggestion. There's multiple ways to do this. Since you suggested the topic, you can introduce it and begin to define the parameters of the discussion. Council doesn't have to follow. That's their prerogative, but I would suspect that each and every time, the council's going to follow the suggestions of the individuals that nominate a topic. Or the council can decide in the collective that, okay, this is what we're going to talk about.
Okay. Anything else?
As you're pondering, I will say that it's probably going to be difficult to have some of these discussions without asking questions of staff. And when we do that, we need to be mindful that staff unintentionally, and I'm thinking of one individual in particular, could hijack the conversation by providing too much information. So we'll be having some conversations with staff to answer the specific question in a concise manner and then retire. And if you want additional information, then you go at it again. But part of what we're after is that we want council to establish policy as you have these discussions in a work session environment. Councilmember Bolden, on the topic of homelessness, we don't have a policy. We do know that there is an issue. And, you know, Godtail, which has moved from the downtown out on the outskirts of the city, we relied on them primarily to address the bulk of that challenge, but yet still, there are homeless who aren't eligible to be at Godtail. City's responsibility, that's what the council's going to decide.
Okay. So, do we need a motion and a vote or just sort of a consensus that that's what we're going to?
Since you're not letting him talk.
Oh, yes, sir.
I'm fine with consensus. Sorry.
Any clarification on anything?
I'm like, sir.
Else? Okay. Great, thank you. So now, just stay where you are. Agenda item number 13, consider issuing a request for qualifications for an executive search firm to fill city manager position.
City council is aware that I will be retiring January 31, 2020. Ta-da. And based on discussions informal that we've had with council as well as some expressions in executive session, the council has indicated wanting to do an executive search firm primarily because none of the existing council has ever hired a city manager. I have never hired a city manager. So with an executive search firm, there is a tremendous network, a professional network to where... there is a tremendous network, a professional network, to where they can identify candidates as an external source. Their objectivity is going to be at a higher level. What they want is giving you a list of candidates which would be successful in the position. They would be visiting with the council prior to initiating the search to ask, what do you want to see in the next city manager? The search will be tailored to what you want, and really, the strength of an executive search firm is their network in checking references. The best indicator of future performance is past performance, and the best way to fully identify with some assurance that you're getting what you're paying for is you've got to have those strong reference checks. The executive search firm doesn't stop at the list that a candidate would provide. They dig awful deep, and they talk to people that you might forget that you ever had a professional relationship with them, and so they're pretty good at that. That's really one of their strengths. If the city council chooses to pursue an executive search firm, what we're suggesting tonight is that you do a call for requests for qualifications. You're not asking an executive search firm to tell you how much it's going to cost. You're going to look at their qualifications. You're going to interview probably not all of them, but you'll pick the ones that you want to interview, and then you'll make a selection. I will be surprised if the search costs more than thirty thousand dollars, but we'll see whether or not my prediction is accurate. Typically, a search will take around four months, can be done in three months, but you've got plenty of time to go through the selection process, visit with the executive search firm, decide when you want to launch the search, and when you want to be able to make a selection. So in theory, on January the thirty-first, I walk out the door, and the following Monday, the new manager walks in the door. It probably won't work that way, but I would suspect that's going to be the go that you are striving for. Madam Mayor, after public comment, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Is there anyone here that would like to speak to this agenda item? Yes, Mary, come on up. We have to get you, everybody can hear you.
Do I need to tell them who I am again?
Just say your name again.
Mary Rome.
Yes, that's fine.
My question is, these interviews, whenever, will they be, will that be public? Will it be held where we can come and hear what these candidates say, and questions that are asked, and what y'all want from them, because ultimately, y'all serve us.
That's fine.
And so I'm interested in what y'all want.
Okay.
But will that be a public thing that we get to come and hear?
Okay. Well, we will let him answer that in just a minute. Is there anything else?
No, that's it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Do y'all have any, we'll let him answer that, and you can have some questions. Yeah.
Well, Madam Mayor and City Council, on the answering of the question, it is extremely rare. I can't even think of an example where interviews would be conducted in public. Number one, you're probably going to really limit your candidate pool. You know, they are competing against each other for the position, and the person who goes last may have an advantage because they get to watch the process, and then some of them are just going to, some, I would refuse to participate in a public interview process. Now, on the other side of the coin, it is not unusual for there to be receptions where all the candidates are there. It's a meet and greet to where the public can come. That is done sometimes, and I would say most of the times not, but it is not unusual. From the council's perspective, you get to watch the candidates and how they interact with the public, and from those that are really interested, then they get to come, meet the candidates, ask whatever questions that they would like, inform their own opinion, and share their thoughts with the council as you go through the selection process.
Is that meet and greet after you trim down the candidates?
Yes.
Okay.
Those are finalists. Now, you'll have some candidates, you know, we live in a very, we live in a glass house, so you can't apply for a position in one city, and that city not know that you applied for the position, especially as you release finalists. Typically, the names aren't released until you get down to finalist. Typically, those candidates are notified, and I always told my mayor and council, when I was going for an interview, I told them in advance that, hey, I'm going to go to that East Texas city with trees and talk to them about a job, and they say, okay, we hope you don't get it. Well, thank you very much. And that's how I did it. But other managers, they're not going to share that information until they know that they're a finalist, and to each, their own. There are some councils that would probably take punitive action if they knew that their manager was actively searching for a job. In those particular situations, I say the relationship between the manager and the council is broken. In this business, managers are mobile, and they don't stay around as long as I have stayed. You know, when I came, I thought I'd be here five, seven years, and fifteen years later, we're retiring and we're staying in the community that we love.
Anything else?
So tonight is just to give you permission to?
Issue an R, yeah.
Issue a request for a search firm?
Request for qualifications for an executive search firm.
Hold a qualification for the firm itself?
Yeah, and what, there will be more than one proposal. I'll be surprised if there's not at least six, and once we get those, we'll have some discussions with council. I'm not selecting the executive search firm. You are. You're the one that's hiring a manager, not me. So you will decide how you process those applications for qualifications, how many you want to interview, and who you want to interview. And so we'll be having some discussions as we get deeper into the process as to how you want to accomplish that. And I'll be visiting with some of the executive search firms and say, okay, tell me what is the best selection process that you've seen, and then we'll bring some information so that the council isn't starting with a blank slate.
So Chair Willinett, obtain a motion to issue a request for qualifications?
I'll make a motion that we issue a request for qualifications for an executive search firm to fill the city manager position, effective February first, two thousand and twenty.
Second.
Moved in second. I have no further discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? I guess that really makes it real.
I can't believe y'all do that to me.
It's hard, hard to do. Executive session?
No, ma'am.
No? Then thank you all for attending. Our meeting is adjourned.